Welcome to the two thousand twenty-five West Valley Levy, Bond and School Board Candidate Meet and Greet Forum. Our PTSA is proud to host this event as part of our mission to support the health, safety, well-being and education of every child. The West Valley PTSA does not support or endorse any political party or candidate. Our goal tonight is simply to educate and empower voters by giving everyone the chance to hear directly from the candidates running for this West Valley School Board and to learn more about the upcoming Levy and Bond. We're so grateful to all the candidates and Dr. Finch for making the time in their busy schedules to be here with us and to answer questions that were submitted by West Valley parents ahead of time. Thank you again for joining us and for caring about our schools, our students and our community. Now it's my pleasure to turn the time over to David Kobia, a fellow West Valley parent who will be serving as our moderator this evening.
Welcome back. We're excited to continue our forum tonight and interview some candidates for West Valley School District Board positions. This next session will be for District Three and we have our candidates Haley Larson and Mark Strong joining us. So we'll go through these questions and I'll start with you Haley. So talk us about what your personal connection is with the West Valley School District and what past or current involvement you have with our schools.
Yeah, absolutely. So my name's Haley. I thank you guys for coming tonight. I moved to Yakima, West Valley area eleven and a half years ago, twelve years ago. My husband went through West Valley Schools and graduated in nineteen ninety-eight from West Valley High School. So he was a former RAM. I grew up on the west side and when I moved to Yakima area, I fell in love with this community. I fell in love with it so much that I moved my baby sister over here and recently my parents after living for fifty-five years on Fox Island. So we are very invested in the community. We are local business owners and parents of a nine and five-year-olds, you know, locally. I feel like I constantly live my life day in and day out selling this community in few senses of door as a real estate broker and also just as somebody who's really passionate about making it the best it can be as far as a face to live. I'm excited for, you know, my continued involvement in youth sports and community partners. And I understand how strong schools really are shaping our community. I mean, my kids currently go to Montessori and it's always been the plan for them to explore their options in public schools after they're through fifth grade. And my daughter, being in fourth grade, she is coming up on that timeline. So we want to be proactive and not reactive and make sure that we have a voice in the schools and we're doing it right.
Great. Thank you. Mark, how about you? What is your connection with West Valley School District and what are some of your past and current connections?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to those of you who are here tonight. We really appreciate your being here, your involvement and your interest in school district and then here to talk about some of the things, not just that I have done, but why I want to continue being a part of this school district and its success. My personal connection started with, I've lived in West Valley for many years. I'm not gonna remember and count how many years it's been, but it's been quite a while since I've been here. I have three daughters who have gone through the school district, two of which have already graduated from West Valley. One finished college, the other one is in college now. Both have done exceptionally well academically, which I credit to West Valley, of course. My last daughter is currently a junior in the high school and doing very well also. My active involvement started many years ago. I have been actively involved in school district issues and operations since living here in West Valley. All of my children have attended the school district and my listed activity goes on and on. I serve on the Superintendent's Advisory Council. I serve as the Parent Teacher Student Association Treasurer at the mid-level campus. I was also a member of the Long Range Facility Planning Committee, actually twice. I'm currently on that committee as well. I've attended many school board meetings long before I even became involved in the school board itself as an interested party, not just in perhaps, in perhaps future endeavors on the school board, but because I think it was important to know what was going on with my, my kids' education. I also worked on various committees on each of the bond proposals before and after being elected on the board. I heard someone talking about going from door to door. I did that many times in the dark, at night, in the cold, in the rain. I did that a lot of it. So I understand when we talk about bonds, what it must be like for all of you to experience and think about spending your hard-earned dollars on a school district. It's vitally important and I can't express enough how important it is that we sort of work the next bonds. Support them all because they all go to back into our community in the form of better education for our children. And lastly, I have been the eight-year incumbent on the school board. One second here, serving as my second term as the school board president. I've gotten to know many of the educators and staff and I have field, chatroom, many field office, not field office, but many field trips for some of our students in the past.
Great. Thank you, Mark. As a current board member, you probably know the district's strategic plan and that it includes four goals, those being a culture of safety and belonging, providing strong foundations, demonstrating mastery of standards and providing career pathways. So what is one additional measure of student success you believe could be added to the strategic plan or one of the existing goals that should be removed?
Thank you for that question. I do believe the strategic, strategic plan is excellent. It's well done and it has a lot of inputs from a lot of sources, including students we have listened to in the past. And it has yielded very successful and positive results. Since I have been on the school board, I think a big part of the school board's success is that it points to some major academic accomplishments so far during my tenure. I want to point those out. I think, you know, we talk about mastery-based learning. It has become a way to achieve higher academic levels of success. Students literally master the course before they move on or allow to move on to the next subject. And not all schools do this. We are one that does. During my eight years on the board, West Valley students graduated at a higher level than the state. The state is currently at about eighty-three percent of the students who attend the high school graduating. We are approaching ninety percent, sometimes a little bit better than that. That's a huge success. It's a big achievement. And we all should be very proud of that and proud of our students in our school district because of that, because that's going to translate into a better life and better community member contributing to our society in the future. It is a big success in my opinion. And let's see, despite that success, if I were to add any one thing to our strategic plan, it would be to raise that one goal. Instead of trying to achieve ninety percent, let's shoot for ninety-five percent academic achievement. Graduating from high school, moving on in the community and in our society as a whole. That's a big part of what we're trying to do here. West Valley has the right programs in place to achieve this big goal. Students can earn college credits while they're in the West Valley School District, which allows them to graduate from high school even earlier as well as finish college early, saves families money and the cost of college is less, hurt, less burdensome to them when they are in that situation. And I think I'm just about out of time. So I was going to stop there. I have more to say, but we're living in time.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Haley, to you, the same question. What do you feel like would be an additional measure that could be added to the strategic goals or any that should be taken away?
Yeah, I don't think that there should be any taken away. I do think that adding a much stronger emphasis on academic excellence is something that should be added and accountability. I think there should be an accountability piece. When I was attending a board meeting this last summer, I was kind of shocked to find out that the way that they push people through the, the grades, even if they don't pass the test, even if they don't, like they just keep graduating them. And to me, I guess, you know, coming from where I went to school, that wasn't an option. That wasn't the way that we graduated high school or, you know, moved through the grades. So I think the core mission has to be education. It has to be raising the standard and ensuring consistent expectations across all of the classrooms. I think we've got to celebrate the achievement and the growth that we see in the schools. But we have to definitely keep a focus on challenging every single student and help them really reach their maximum potential. I don't think that you can really push a student to reach their maximum potential when they know that they're going to move on to the next grade without any consequences.
Okay, thank you. Next question for you Haley is regarding student success. So too few parents are involved in the education of their children, including communicating with teachers, attending school events and even voting in this election. So as a board member, what solutions would you offer to increase the involvement of parents in their students' education?
Yeah, so with my limited time as a parent, my oldest is nine years old. I've been able to forge really awesome relationships with my kids as teachers and I think that that's been pretty instrumental in how I feel about their education. I, we have very clear and concise communication and I feel super involved. I feel very heard. I feel like they're being taught in the very best way that they can. And I've heard really great things about some of the West Valley schools, like Cottonwood. I know I've heard from multiple friends that they're just like very, very good with communication and hearing parents and they feel like Cottonwood staff especially, this is just what I've, you know, perceived or heard in the community, is very approachable. And I think that that's really important. I think as board members, we should be very approachable also. If we're approachable, then parents are going to meet us where we're at and they're going to be able to voice their concerns. And we want, I mean, as a board member, I think anyone who's in that position wants to know what the community's concerns are so that we can make an action plan to help solve them.
Great. And to you, Mark, how do we increase the involvement of parents in the students' education?
Well, again, thank you for your question. Again, another excellent question. And I will say, ever since I've been on the school board, the first day, I've always tried to think of things we could do as a school district to increase parent involvement. To be honest, it's a tough nut to crack. Getting participation from the parents to some of the school board meetings and other events is a challenge. I mean, they have work lives. They take care of their kids. They come home from school. They cook. They prepare everything. It's a busy life and I get that and I understand that. So it's going to be not as easy as it sounds to do, but I think it's very important nonetheless. That being said, however, I think there are some things we could do and should take steps toward getting there in trying to get that parent involvement up to a higher level. Include parents as part of the education process, like creating after-school activity, learning activities where parents can attend along with their children, their side by side with them. Solicit parent feedback throughout the course of the school year about their children's academic process and success. Talk to the teachers. Request that parents attend one classroom event per year that their own child or their own children are in. Makes sense. Have them be there so that they can see for themselves what's going on, make those judgments firsthand. And this could include chatrooming or going on field trips with the kids. Request parents to attend at least one board meeting per semester each school year. And I can emphasize this now because on my time on the board, we've had a number of meetings, some contentious, some difficult meetings, there are challenges. But what I think needs to change is those individuals show up only when they think there's a problem instead of when things are good. When we need to look at things in a different, critical light to see what we can do better and build upon the success of our school district. And that's one of the things that I would like to really see happen. Lastly, solicit feedback from parents in the form of a yearly option suggestion form. Have them get that feedback to us as quickly as they can so that we can make adjustments.
Great, thank you. You've been on the school board for a few years now, but I would still like to ask you this question. How will we manage your work and family standing effectively to be a part of the school board?
Again, thank you for your question. I kind of chuckle at this one because I've been doing it so long, it almost feels like second nature. The question left out a few things like, how do you have time to attend your child's after-school activities? In my case, my daughter's basketball and volleyball games. The point is that I have not only learned to structure my life and my time for school board activities, but to build it into those, but to build into it those other things like checking if my daughter has done her homework or all of her homework and attended practice so she can play the sports and the things she likes to do. In short, I try to be a role model for all my kids. However, reviewing school board materials are very important in the role of the school board director. You have to look at the materials. You have to read them and it takes time to do. And I just, my strategy is when it comes to looking at that material, preparing for the meetings, I take the weekend because we usually get our information on Friday. I take a couple hours to set it aside, read the materials. And so I like to read it closer to the date of the actual meeting so it's fresher in my mind so that I can have time to really think it through before we actually take any actions on items. I usually carve out about two hours to review the materials. There's a ton of reading in school board activity in terms of the stuff that you need to know about and be prepared for at the meetings. And lastly, I like to make sure I have a sense of my family for this level of involvement. I have to thank them for being here tonight, but also the fact that they let me spend as much time as I do doing school board activities and the amount of time I do outside of the school board activities, just being a parent and being involved with the school district.
Thank you, Mark. Haley, I think we've gone over the need to schedule time efficiently to dedicate your hours to the school board. So help us understand from your perspective, how will you manage your work and family life to dedicate the time necessary to serve effectively on the board if elected?
Yeah, so I manage a fairly large and I guess, yeah, successful, but it's, it takes a lot of my time. So I manage a business that takes a lot of my time and I've worked really hard over the last five years at finding a pretty awesome team and staff that I can delegate to, that I can lean on. And, you know, my family and my staff and my team supports this decision and supports what I'm doing. I'm doing this for my kids a hundred percent and everyone that they are growing up with in this community. And I think that this is just too important to not. I, I have to, I'm preaching to my kids as a mom that I can't have a complaint or have an issue with something without standing up and at least trying to have a voice or a way to correct it. And I can't be a poor example by just saying that and not doing it. So I think delegating, I think I'm used to managing a pretty darn busy hectic schedule. I spent four years as Washington State Real Estate Director as well as the Yakima Association of Realtors President, Director. And I, I'm off of that now, so that freed up some time for me. So that's pretty amazing. I served on the Montessori School Board and I was able to, I know that's a much lower level, but I was able to effectively manage that schedule and I believe make a difference on that board as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Gender identity is a current topic in our culture and our district. What should be the role of the school district in gender issues related to athletics, restrooms, locker rooms? And as a board member, how will you help our district navigate these gender issues?
Yeah, I believe that all kids, that every child deserves a safe place to, to be, to go to school, to be educated. I can't imagine growing up in this time and going through what some of the kids are going through and that, you know, having being scared to go to locker rooms or bathrooms or whatever that may be for them. I think that there's a biological differences absolutely matter in certain places. And my heart stops are, you know, settings like bathrooms, locker rooms and athletics. I will always and forever protect my little girl and I don't believe that there is any reason for us to gray this area at all. My solution is very similar to Jessica's. There's nine staff bathrooms that I'm aware of that we, we want all kids to feel safe and secure and they, you know, the transgender community or folks that identify with a different gender could absolutely use those staff bathrooms. I'm sure that the staff would have no issue with that to keep the, the majority of the kids feeling comfortable and safe.
Thank you. Same question to you, Mark. How will you help our district navigate these gender issues?
Okay, thank you. Again, this is an excellent question. This is an area that is certainly a sensitive nerve in our, not just our community, but our nation and a flashpoint for gender identity concerns. First thing I have to say is we are bound by the law. We must stick with that. If we don't have the principles of the law, then we don't really have much of anything at all. It's important that we follow what we're legally obligated to do. And the law states that schools and school districts cannot discriminate on basis, based on gender identity. So I do say that. However, I'm like some of my other candidate friends here who are running. I do not support biological males playing in female sports. I think that there has to be a solution somewhere. Maybe we just haven't stumbled on it yet and figured out what to do, but I think that's also a hard stop for me. I do feel that kids need to feel safe, no matter what, in a learning environment. That is one of our primary functions, that they are able to stay safe, learn well and be protected when that's necessary. And to do that, our schools have to be a starting point because that's where they spend a lot of their time. I also think that the way to affect change in this area is through our congressional sources. The bottom line is they made the law. We have to make our votes count and get them to change the law back to where it should be. So I think that's the biggest part of all of this is getting our congressional sources to make some of these big changes to help us navigate this issue a heck of a lot better than we are right now. One last thing I will point out, we, I, the reason I feel that the law is so important, we cannot jeopardize our financial standing as a school district. We should not jeopardize our standing as a school district educationally by doing something or knowingly violate the law. So it's very important that we stick with that as a basis, a foundation to start anything we are going to do in this area.
Thank you for that response. As you know, the school board established a curriculum review committee consisting of both school, school district representatives and parent positions. These members are provided all the proposed materials before adoption through the vote of the school board. So Mark, are there other steps the school board can take to ensure parents' voices are heard in the adoption of educational materials?
Absolutely. There's always something we can do better as long as we look for it, right? So I want to say, let me start by saying that, you know, our educators are paid professionals by the school district to do a job, to educate our children. So I believe in letting them lead the way on a lot of these issues when it comes to our instructional materials. That doesn't mean the school board can't be involved, but I do trust our educators to make good decisions in this area. After all, that's their livelihood. That's their life. At present, I think the Instructional Materials Committee is a fair system. It could be tweaked a little bit more. And, you know, anything can improve, as I said a moment ago, but I think it is a fair system and a minimum. I think some things we can do if we are talking about trying to improve upon the process is, number one, we could increase the size of the committee. Instead of eight, sixteen participants, we could have twenty, ten of each. And/or we could consider having two or more neutral reviews from outside of the school district in addition to what the, the IMC comes up with. Have some external reviews done to see what they tell us. They may have different points of view or different perspectives at a higher level. I also think that educators who have children in the school district should be allowed to be on the committee. I differ with some of my colleagues on this, but they are parents too and they have every right to be participating in that in their own children's education. And this is one way of doing it. I also think we should allow parents not selected for the committee to either write a written statement on the books, on books or the materials they like or dislike, or even both. Allow them a two-minute period to speak at the committee about their concerns, if they have an interest in some of the books that they like or don't like. They also have the option to opt out of those things if they feel it's inappropriate. And lastly, if a book or a material is rejected by the IMC, give the educator the opportunity to explain to them in person why the, the selected book or material was rejected and why. Bottom line is our educators have been to college. They've been trained to learn their profession. Let them teach and then let them practice their profession with our students.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Haley, same question to you. What would you do as a board member to ensure that the voices of parents are heard in the adoption of these educational materials?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is, is more communication is going to provide more confidence in our schools. We've got to increase transparency and honestly, again, I know I keep saying it, but the approachability and the, you know, the ease of having parents be able to become involved. I think it's really a great idea to have the review committee, but I think either expanding it or making sure that we're, you know, making it open to all parents and educators and really involving as many different folks from as many different walks of life so that we're getting a true voice and a true sample of West Valley. I think that's very important. I think, you know, providing summaries of materials is great and that will bring us some feedback and maybe spur on some more conversation. So that's wonderful. Parents need to have an easy way to understand what's being taught and why it's being taught. I think it's important that if, if they have questions, those questions are answered and they feel like they can get those answers easily. Because ultimately, every single parent wants their child to be successful. They all want their child to be educated and they all want them to feel, they want to feel good about what they're being taught.
Great, thank you. Given that the school board positions are non-partisan, how do you reconcile the explicit political affiliation of some school board campaigns with the expectation that school board members remain neutral and focus solely on what's best for all students within the district? Haley?
So first of all, I, I truly believe this isn't about politics. I think it's a hundred percent about the kids and our community. I will always listen and learn and vote based on what's best for students. I feel like I'm a very critical thinker and I think that I am good at having empathy and listening to all different sides. That being said, my endorsement from the Yakima Valley Republicans helps people who don't know me know what I stand for and know my values and who I am. And that's important to me because I, I have, you know, only had a limited twelve or thirteen years to get to know people in the community. So for me, that was important to, to tell people what I'm about.
Okay, Mark, same question to you. What are your thoughts on political affiliation in this, in this race?
Well, I think it is a crucial aspect of any school board. I think all school board members are like other community members and have their own personal opinions and thoughts that relate to political parties. They are free to vote for whomever they please. And the other part of that is I don't think that political issues should be in a school board discussion. And the reason I think that is because school boards are supposed to be nonpartisan. It says when you thought, when you apply to be a candidate, this is a nonpartisan election. And there's a good reason for that, that one that I truly believe in. And that is, we make our decisions, not our politics when it comes to our children. We believe in what we believe and we believe that we can do the right things for our kids. When we tie ourselves to political parties to make our decisions, it just doesn't seem to serve the kids very well because we're, we're rooted in a political decision versus a personal decision. And I think in the long term, in the best interest of the school district, for many school districts, not just our own, partisan politics needs to stay out of it. We're talking about making our decisions about our kids, what we want to do and how we're going to do it. And we don't want the politics in the mix. And one other thing I think that is important is just recognizing the slow nature of this. When we start letting politics and partisan politics especially chip, chip away at the foundation of why school boards exist and why we do things independently, sooner or later, we're not going to have that option for us. It's going to be sort of dictated to us. So I do believe strongly that partisan politics don't belong in the school district. Lastly, I do want to say that I, I, I worry about the influence peddling that we get into when we talk about putting political parties in our school district. Okay, I want to be able to talk to any one of you in this room about issues concerning your child or my child without thinking that politics are guiding the decisions. There are feelings. There are children. That's what cares. That's what we care most about and that's what should be most important.
Thank you. Sticking with you, Mark, as a board member, do you believe it's important for your children to attend West Valley School District? And if not, why?
Of course, I believe it's very important for your kids to be a part of the school district. How do you, how do you build that rapport with your community if you don't have your kids? How can you speak about your school district if you don't have your kids in the school district? I mean, you can talk about it generically, but can you talk about it from an experienced level? Can you say what my kid experienced today with that teacher in that classroom? Can your child come home to you and say, hey, my teacher in West Valley taught me how to use a can opener. I'd never used a can opener before, whatever the case may be. You're getting that education directly from that child, from the teacher that they just experienced. And I guess, I believe it's extremely important to have your kids in the school district to represent it, to speak for it and to also engage in it. I kind of also think that too, it's kind of, you know, and I don't mean this in a critical way, but it's kind of an experiment for someone to come along and all of a sudden say, I want to be in the school district. I want to be the board president without any prior history of working for committees, being involved in the decision-making process or attending board meetings or going to special events in the school district if your kids aren't there. I mean, be honest, you don't have a purpose in being there if your kids aren't attending, attending or being a part of those things. So it's important to have those connections, to have that relationship with the community, with the teachers and with, involved in the school district. So yes, it is very important to be in the school, to have your kids in the school district. And lastly, I will say, you know, that's what got me involved in place in being That's what got me involved in place and being in the school district because my kids went to the school district. They came home telling me about the good things that they experienced. And why they wanted to continue and stay there. The relationships they spawned with some of the teachers and the experiences they had. They, they will resonate with them for the rest of their lives. And to be honest, I'm very proud of that, and I'm very glad to be a part of the school district because of it.
Thank you. Haley, what are your thoughts on the importance of having children in the school district as a board member?
Well, I feel like this question was submitted just specially for me, so um I a hundred percent see the value and the connection that it shows. Um, it shows commitment and investment to have your children in the school district. Uh, my oldest is nine years old and she's sitting right there, so. Um, she, I'm not willing to disrupt their path that my husband and I have selected for them. Um, to go to their current school until fifth grade, um and then explore their other options. I'm not willing to experiment, um, that's a great word, with uh their, their education and where they're at for. You know, day in and day out, in, until I'm confident that it's the very best place for them. Um, I do understand that I'm gonna be seeing things, you know, through the eyes of community members and my staff. And agents that I work with every day and clients, and I'm always listening and that's what's motivated me to, to run for this position. Um, and just purely the fact that I, you know, I'm gonna be navigating schools with my school-aged children for the next twelve years. So I'm in it for the long haul. I'm a hundred percent a proactive person, not a reactive person. I wanna make it a better place. I wanna make our community a better place. This comes like from a very good place in my heart, no matter what anybody knows or thinks. Um, I, I have no ulterior motives. I just truly would wanna make the school the best possible place for our kids to grow up.
Great, thank you. Now Haley, what in your background is prepared you to serve as a school board member, and what are your unique qualifications for this responsibility?
Well, I'm a mom and I think that that makes me uniquely qualified in and of itself. I'm a business owner, I'm a team leader, I'm a community builder. We are very, very strong supporters of all things Yakima County. I love this community with my whole heart and I am very proud to be involved in all the ways that we're involved. Yakima has so much to offer. My husband actually um gets frustrated with me sometimes when we travel because I am the one that is constantly telling everyone. How amazing Yakima is and what a great place it is to live and how happy I am um to raise my family there and all the intricate differences. That Yakima offers. I say it's the most underrated community in Washington State, and I truly believe that. And I feel like just purely um. My community mindedness and my background as a director on multiple different boards and being a mom. And working in this community uniquely qualifies me for a different perspective.
Great, thank you. Mark, what qualifies you to be a member of the school board in West Valley?
Well, again, thank you for another nice question. I do feel this one is kinda tailor-made for me as well. Um, I just feel like I've had proven experience. I've served on, in the school district, engaged in numerous activities, as I mentioned previously for a number of years. I'm an incumbent school board member for the last eight years. I'm serving my second term as your school board president. Our educational position in the county and the state is outstanding. Um, in the last eight years since I have been there, it has dramatically improved. Since I became a board member, and I'm not saying I own all the credit for that, I'm just saying I'm part of the team that has made that success possible. Financial responsibility, our financial pitch, picture or posture is very good. Like our educational programs, they have flourished during my tenure on the board. Been a big part of those decisions that have put us in this by great financial position. Um, I've demonstrated leadership. I don't go along to get along. I make sound decisions on what I think is best for the school district, period. No, no politics involved in my decision, just simply what I think is best for the school district. And for some of those who have been around me for a while, when we have made votes, I'm not, I'm not afraid to be the long single vote of either yea or nay. Because it's what I believe is, makes our district so successful is that we are willing to do that individually. Also, um, I'm the board chair of OIC. I, I don't mention that very often, but I am. I've been working with them for the past three years. And we have been making big progress down there. Um, I'm invested in West Valley. All of my children have gone through the West Valley School District of Education because I think it is one of the best around. And I believe in the West Valley School District. I think I've gotten to know many parents, educators, community members, and the administrative staff over the years. Most importantly, I am one of you. I came from some of you sitting right in these chairs out, out in the audience. I have been there and I am one of you. I came from the ranks of parents attending and committed to the school district. I believe in making sound decisions based on three primary principles. One, what is best for our students and family. Two. Can we financially afford to do it? And three, is it legal?
Great. All right, thank you so much for taking the time to answer so many questions. We have one last final question for the two of you. We'll start with you, Mark. Could you share with us, why should the West Valley community elect you to serve on the school board?
Well, I think I've shared a lot of my, in my earlier conversation, a lot of reasons for wanting to continue to serve on our school board. Have a proven record of success. I support strong academic success, strong and solid financial posture for the school district. Eight successful years on the school board. I am endorsed by the state local educated, educators association, and I'm very proud of their endorsement. And I know the terrain. No need for me to learn our school district all over again, how it operates and why. I already know it and I'm a big part of it. Thank you. Oh, wait a minute, do have some more notes here. I know I can continue to build on our current success, man. I just feel very strongly that knowing the terrain will help me immensely. And help you get to where we need to be. I will always vote for what I believe in and it's the best for our school district. And I am interested, I am invested in our community and school district. I, again, I am one of you. And out for continuity, I'm not an experiment waiting for results. I have proven results and experience to support my words.
Thank you, Mark. And we'll wrap it up with you, Haley. Why do you believe that the West Valley community should elect you as a school board member?
Yeah, um, I believe that I'll bring a balanced and a practical and a positive voice, um, committed to helping every single student and family succeed in West Valley. My ultimate goal is to make our community the very best place that we can for our kids to grow up and thrive. Um, I, I genuinely care for this community. I, like I said, I'm, I'm in it for the long haul. I'm here for. Twelve more years of school at least, and um I'm focused on academic excellence, transparency, involving more parents. And just connection in general. I think that that's gonna be super important to the success of this board and. Um, I think that the, the current board did a really fab, fabulous job, making a lot of progress, but I think a fresh perspective is always a benefit.
Great. Well, thank you both for sharing your thoughts with us today. Thank you for all the candidates. Thank you for the uh West Valley School District, PTSA. As well as uh Church for hosting us and all the audio visual help that we had tonight. Appreciate everybody's attendance. Thank you.